Meeting of the Colerain Township Zoning Commission, please come to order. Could we all stand for the, join me for the pleasure allegiance, please? My pleasure allegiance, we reply, in the United States of America, and to a republic where riches stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Lauf?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Taylor? Mr. Westfall?
Could we have Mr. Ferring and Mr. Grody please come to the stand? Okay, first thing I'd like to do is ask everyone to quiet their phone, please. Thank you. The Colerain Township Zoning Commission meets on the third Tuesday of each month at 7:00 PM in the Colerain Township Trustee's Chamber, 4200 Springdale Road, Colerain Township, Ohio 42, I'm sorry, 45251. As specified in Section 3.2.2, roles and powers of the Colerain Township zoning resolution, we hear zoning changes, requests, recommendations or approval or nonapproval, inform them to the trustee or the legislative body for the township. This process is governed by the Ohio Revised Code. As we go on further through, as we come up to these things, we'll explain how they work. Next thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the November 17th, 2015 meeting. Is there any corrections or changes or additions? None so appearing, the Chair requested motion for the approval of the November 17th, 2015.
Motion approved.
It's been moved in second as we approve the minutes. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Yes.
I need to abstain because I was not seated at that meeting.
Okay, next on the agenda is a public address. That is, anyone who has anything would like to address the zoning commission with anything that is not on the agenda. Do we have anybody that would like to do that? None so appearing, we will move, move on. Next on the agenda is a final development plan. The way a final development plan works is, the zoning staff will make a presentation of the request. The applicant may also make a presentation of their request. The zoning commission will have a discussion followed by a motion to approve or deny the request, and then there will be a roll call vote. Next on the agenda is a final development plan for case ZA 2014-01, Country Woods Village. It's a minor amendment to a final development plan for a maintenance building. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes, so we do. As mentioned, this is a minor modification to a final development plan, the applicant is Scott Huber with Abercrombie &amp; Associates. This case actually takes us all the way back to 1997, but most recently, a major, or excuse me, a minor modification was adopted in 2014. I believe that the FDP now consists of 164 units of multifamily housing in both town homes and apartment structures. This particular minor modification is a proposal to move the dumpster location, as well as add a 70-foot-by-40-foot accessory structure to be used as a maintenance building. This is an aerial of the site, Country Woods Village, and this is the existing, this is what is existing on the site so far today. Zoning, it is currently zoned as PD-R, and it is surrounded by R3 Residential. This is the area where we will focus our attention today, behind an existing 13-car detached The FDP is submitted to staff again. In yellow here is what is existing today, and now in yellow is what is proposed on the newest FDP. And again, we're going to focus on this area, kind of in between the two, the two, the existing and the proposed. This focus is on, again, the dumpster area. What you see here in red is what is currently approved on the FDP, so this is not the proposal, this is what is currently approved for two dumpster spaces behind, what you see in yellow there is the existing 13-car garage. Within that 13-car garage, there is a little space in there for an existing dumpster. This is the proposed modification. Again, that for reference, that existing 13-car garage and now the dumpster area would be moved over behind that 13-car garage away from kind of the common access drives, would be enlarged to incorporate four dumpsters rather than two. And then directly across from that to the west, southwest, would be the proposed 70-by-40 accessory structure. This is an image, looking at that 13-car garage where that dumpster location currently is, kind of in the middle of that structure there. This is looking, and obviously, there's some construction going on, so not the prettiest of pictures, but just to try and give you an idea, that would be looking at where the dumpster is currently approved. The highway, 275, is right behind that, over that little mound, that hill there. This is kind of peeking around behind that existing garage structure where the dumpsters would be located, looking to the north, northeast, and then looking back towards where the accessory structure would be proposed. And what you would see behind this would also be more of the residential town home buildings that are already proposed and approved in the FDP. Also submitted with this FDP, this minor modification, excuse me, is an updated landscape plan. Just to give you an idea of what we're looking at, here's our new, our dumpster location. And zoom in so you can see this. The only changes that occurred are basically just because of the relocation of the dumpsters, so the shrubbery landscaping around the dumpsters now moved with that dumpster area over to surround it, rather than being in this area, which is where it was originally approved around the dumpsters. And then the same landscaping, same number, and sizing of landscaping is still, still exists in the new proposal, it is just kind of redispersed around the proposed structure. So it was all kind of clustered in this area, and it's now surrounding that structure. Staff does recommend approval of the minor modification to the FDP with the following two conditions, that the applicant must meet the criteria, Section 14.4, specifically that trees and shrubs should be sized appropriately at the time of planting, and also that the applicant must provide elevation drawings for the accessory structure to staff prior to issuance of the zoning certificate. These drawings must represent that the accessory structure will be consistent with the character and scale of the existing structures on the property.
Does the applicant have a presentation?
Yes, good evening. My name is Scott Huber with Abercrombie &amp; Associates. I'm the site civil engineer, and with me tonight is Mr. Christian James of Hillsinger Building Group. Basically, just a little, add a little bit to Ms. LaCount's report, what she has said is accurate and correct. I just want to explain to you a little bit of the need, why we decided to add the building. We were in the middle of construction doing the improvements that were shown on last year's plan. As the dirt grated out, we saw this area by the dumpster pad was becoming to be a level pad, an open area. We knew, I guess, from our previous meeting, that our dumpster area that we had discussed previously, that that would have been, I think we had some discussion, that that was a little bit problematic. We saw an opportunity here to, you know, move those dumpsters behind the existing garage. That existing garage will provide some screening for that, there's a mound out there that'll provide some screening, and then we had an opportunity to put this additional garage here that'll screen the front of those dumpsters, and then it's also going to provide some equipment storage that they can store their equipment for landscaping and snow removal. Currently, the snow removal equipment was being stored outside on the property, and with the construction of this building, that's going to allow us or allow them to put all that equipment under roof. So the intent is to take all the dumpster areas and consolidate them into this location that you see on the plan there, and then we wanted to have the additional building there to store the equipment. So that's basically it. In summary, if you have any questions, I can answer them, or Mr. James is here to answer them also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, just one more thing, Mr. Chairman. With those two conditions, we are in agreement with both of those, and do not have any objections. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith, do you have any questions?
Yes. I want to make sure I got it correct. You want a garage and building first?
Well, it's one building. It's one building that's 2,800 square feet, a one-story building, and that is going to be a, it's going to be a garage building, but it's going to be for equipment storage. There are not going to be any residential vehicles stored in that building, strictly for equipment, onsite equipment for landscaping, snow removal, maintenance, things like that.
And will the change be reported in?
No, because it's, it's all onsite equipment.
Mr. Lauf?
No questions.
Mr. Ferring?
No questions.
Mr. Grody?
Ms. LaCount, could we go back to one of those slides? That maybe the best one is the one that shows the landscaping? That's fine, right there. My concern is, can you give us some idea of the distance from the edge of that maintenance building to the dumpsters? Because my concern is with those huge trucks coming in there to empty those dumpsters, is there enough room for them to get in and to do that properly?
My name's Christian James with Hillsinger Management Company. When we looked at this design, we actually contacted Rumkey, our sales rep, and we had, when the truck came out for their normal pickup, we actually measured and walked it off. And the purpose of doing it this way was so the Rumkey truck can pull in, pick up the dumpster, back up, get the next one, get the next one, they can all do it right within that space without having to back out into the, I guess, the traffic pattern. So the distance that was designed specifically for Rumkey's big front loader of the vehicle. And the existing dumpster location that's cut out between those garages where there's two dumpsters, that's going to be eliminated, so Rumkey doesn't have to move in and out of that pattern of traffic also. So all four dumpsters, the two new ones for the new section, and the two dumpsters for the existing section will be in one, in one area.
So there is sufficient room for the truck to move around?
Correct.
And out?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
No more questions?
I have no questions either. Does anybody on the staff want to make any comments before the vote? None so appearing, the Chair would entertain a motion to accept country, case number, the change to the final development plan, the minor, the minor change to the final development plan, FKZA 2014-01, Country Woods Village. Do we have a motion?
So.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Would you like conditions on that?
With the conditions, I'm sorry.
With the conditions added, provided by staff. Do you still have that? Okay. It's been moved in second, that we accept the minor amendment, case ZA 2014-01. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Lauf?
Aye.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Grody?
Yes.
Mr. Ferring?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Aye. Motion carried. Next on the agenda is two public carings. One is for, the way public carings work is, the zoning staff will make a presentation of the request, the applicant may also make a presentation of the request. The meeting is then opened for public comment, three to five minutes, no redundancy, please. Then closed for public input, is followed by discussion among commission members. The zoning commission will then make a motion to approve or deny the request. They'll have a roll call vote, and it'll be sent to the trustees with the answer. The first one on the agenda is case number ZA 2015-05, 7600 Colerain Avenue, a request for a zoning change from R7 B2 to B3. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As mentioned, this is a request, a map amendment request to change the zoning from R7 and B2 to the B3 Commerce District. This is the first time this application has been made to the zoning commission, and it was heard before the Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission on December 3rd, where they voted in a three-to-two vote for disapproval of this application. 7600 Colerain Avenue is located here on your screen, and it does consist of five different parcels having frontage on both Colerain Avenue and John Rose Avenue. The entire site is roughly 12.7 acres, but the area for the rezoning is, this area to the northeast, three parcels in the northern portion, measuring about nine and a half acres. This is the, this is the site of the former Builders First Source industrial facility. So what's highlighted in yellow there is actually the only portion of this property that we are looking to rezone to match up with the B3 zoning on the southern portion of this property. Sorry, let me tell you what's around it. To the north, it is zoned B2 and R7, so general business as well as multifamily residential. It's used as a retail strip center as well as apartments. To the south, it is zoned B3 Commerce and used for commercial and industrial mix of The eastern side is bordered by R6 Urban Residential, and it is primarily single-family homes. However, Struble Elementary is not far to the east either, down Banning Road. And to the west, along Colerain Avenue, obviously zoned for B2 general business and used for a variety of commercial activities. I have quite a few photos of this site, so stop me if I'm overwhelming you. This is an image looking into, straight into the middle of the site from Colerain Avenue looking to the east. Get my pointer out of the way, sorry. This is looking south, standing at the front of the site, Colerain Avenue is on the right there. Again, looking southeast-ish into the middle of the site. This is standing in the middle of the site, looking back towards the residential area. From about this point forward where this picture is taken is roughly where that zoning line is, between the B2 and the R7. So this portion of the site in a rezone, this portion of the site is actually a nonconforming use, because the zoning is R7. So if this were rezoned, it would actually eliminate that nonconforming use on this particular portion of the site. Standing at the very back of the property and looking northward, what you see in the back of this image is that multifamily apartment building. Kind of back in the middle of the site, also looking at that multifamily apartment building, so that you can kind of see the distance in the, in the buffer yards there, or the lack thereof. This is standing in that same location, but looking to the northwest, and that, what you see there is more of the B2 commercial uses to the north. So that's basically immediately adjacent to, just to the left of that residential structure there, is this, this area here. This is looking at, from the driveway in the residential, residential zoning just behind, and you see the very large blue structure behind this residential building, and then also from that parking lot, so it's, there's, there's not much of a visual breakup between the, between the existing uses. This is actually, just for giggles, this is from John Rose Avenue. So this is not part of the rezone, but it is part of that property. All right, let's talk comprehensive plan. This, this particular area is considered to be within the White Oak character area. And you'll see it here on, kind of in this general area designated by the Comp Plan for Mixed Use Employment Center. White Oak is considered to be an older viable neighborhood with a strong mixture of residential housing types and small-scale commercial services. Comp Plan recommends that Colerain Avenue in this area is transitioning to office and light industrial uses. The guidelines, the land use guidelines for White Oak really look to encourage the continued development of light industrial and offices along Colerain Avenue in this particular, along this particular portion of Colerain Avenue. It doesn't appear that the existing structures are really a threat to the neighborhood character, given what is existing there, but the guidelines do call for adequate buffering between residential and non-residential uses. Obviously, we don't have that, so as the site redevelops, it would be something to pay attention to. That said, this proposal would be in conformance with the comprehensive plan. This proposal would also be in conformance with the land use plan, which recommends this entire area, this entire site as light industrial. Light industrial really is intended to be used for smaller-scale industrial uses. This site is, I think I mentioned earlier, the former location of Builders First Source, which was consistent with the, with the use designation, and the site, it does currently sit vacant. Another thing that staff would like for the board to consider is that this particular site is within the GROSSPAC community reinvestment area, better known as a CRA, which is an area that is designated by the township. It is identified as distressed from a development standpoint, and it does provide tax incentives for the revitalization of residential, commercial, or industrial projects. So this, I think the reason that the Regional Planning Commission recommended or chose to kind of move away from a favorable recommendation on this is because of the straight letter zoning. I, I think that there's a feeling that there are less development controls when we go to a straight letter zoning. I think in this particular area, in GROSSPAC, providing consistent zoning across this site will make it more shovel-ready for redevelopment in an area that is distressed and could really use a catalyst of redevelopment of this type of site. So that said, staff does recommend approval of the zone change request.
Thank you. Does the applicant have any, have a presentation?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name's Steve Cahill. I work for Abercrombie &amp; Associates. I am the applicant. I'm a professional surveyor, been working on this site, interestingly enough, for, probably been involved for 35-plus years when I first started working for Tom Abercrombie in the late 70s, early 80s. Very vibrant site at that time, trust manufacturing facility with, actually, Western Home Center at the time, so. I'm here tonight representing FKS Realty and Mr. Robert Stenger, who is an authorized member of that group. Bob is also the principal of Cincinnati Mine Machine, which is an adjacent property to this, to the tract that we're looking at here. Mr. Stenger, of course, is a respected, important member of the Colerain Township business community. As Jenna has pretty much told you, this site was formerly known as Builders First Source, and of course, prior to that, Western Home Center. It contains three zoning designations, B2, B3, and R7, as Ms. LaCount has informed us, and of course, we're asking for a zone change amendment to change the portions of this property from B2 and R7 to R3. We feel, as do the owners, that this zoning conformity would more logically address the existing improvements and development of the site, at the same time, make the property more desirable for future occupation and possible development. We also believe that a change to B3 would benefit the township by creating more desirable mixed-use parcel, in a 13-acre parcel, as a matter of fact, in an area that is, of course, again, as Ms. LaCount told us, in dire need of development. So the B3 zone should be granted, would match the land use plan, of course, calling for light industry, which is allowed in B3. And of course, Jenna talked a little bit about the vision of the township in that area, and it seems to match that. And we also, of course, we think that it more logically fits the current use and development, a change to those B3, really looking for some conformity and consolidation of one zone, I think to help in development or promotion of development in the area. So with that, we'd like to ask for your consideration in granting this zone change, and I'd also offer up my assistance in any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Grody, do you have any questions for him?
I think most of them were answered. I was going to ask Ms. LaCount if you could give us some idea of what the nuisances are that the Regional Zoning Commission referenced in their material.
Can you give us some idea of that?
I am not sure of the nuisances that they referenced. I don't believe that we have any open nuisance records on the property. I can certainly go back and double-check, but there's nothing that was flagged to my attention in this, in this review process.
And sorry, you answered my question about the FKS and the Cincinnati Mine Machinery. Is it their intent for Cincinnati Mine Machinery to develop some of this for their own business?
Well, there has been some, some proposals on the table for them to grab onto one of the adjacent buildings to their property, to expand their business a little bit to the, to the west, create some additional manufacturing in that area, so they're in need of some space there. If anybody has been through, close to that side, they're a little cramped, and so then there has been some thought of using this parcel as one of the existing buildings that adjoins their property to help them with expansion, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ferring?
They've answered everything that I, I'm just really glad to see somebody do something.
It's been vacant for a long time. I really forgot to mention that, that it has been, just been sitting there.
Mr. Lauf?
No questions.
Mrs. Smith?
Will it have any effect on senior citizen development coming to John Rose?
I think I'd have to, yes, Jenna, help me out there a little bit.
I don't know that it'll really have any sort of impact, especially if you're talking traffic, because John Rose will be dead-ended at that senior development, and access to that development will be coming from Banning and the other side of that development.
And there is some natural buffering too, I believe, you know?
And there's a creek that goes through.
A creek and vegetation, trees and... Anything else?
I'll make a comment.
Okay, you can have a comment.
Well, my comment is, like I said, rather worry about buffers and all that stuff when we actually have something going on there. we actually have something going on there, you know? We can always, we can always have arguments about buffers and landscapes and all that stuff, but right now, we've got a bunch of stuff that's too close, unmuted, you know, not that attractive, so.
I think it is.
I'm unwilling to have discussions down the road if something really happened here.
I think it is important to note that those development standards would, would be in place, should there be any new development, which is of, of course, what we're hoping for.
I agree with Mr. Lauf on that, that's been sitting down there empty for a long, long time. Anybody else have any questions? None appearing. The chair would entertain a motion to accept the zoning request changed from R7, B2 to B3 for 7600 Coleraine Avenue.
So moved.
We have two so moved, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have, we have, I know, we have a motion and a second for case number ZA 201-5-057600, Coleraine Avenue. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Chairman, before we take the roll call vote, Mrs. Lecount, were there any conditions at all on this, which is straight-out change of zoning?
Since there is no development plan in place, staff didn't feel it necessary to add any additional conditions on here, because any new, any development would then have to meet the standards of that B3 zoning district.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Lauf?
Hi.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Grody?
Yes.
Mr. Ferring?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Hi. Motion carried.
And we hope to see you back here with a tourist plan.
Soon, soon. You're quite welcome. Next on the agenda is case number ZA 201-5-04, a text amendment to add language for alternative financial service providers. It's, as one has been continued for August 18th, zoning commission meeting. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes, sir, we do. As you know, this text amendment was initiated by this board in July of this year. There was a moratorium placed, a one-year moratorium, placed on alternative financial service providers in August of 2014. That, that moratorium was extended twice, and it will expire on July, or, excuse me, January 31st of 2016. The Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission did review this text amendment in August and recommended some changes, and what you have in front of you this evening are changes that, that staff feels, after further research, as well as discussion with the law director, are, are much more appropriate. Just to run down, for those who may not remember back in July, what, what the basics of this text amendment were. It was to revise Article 8 Business Zoning Districts, as well as Article 16, the rules, excuse me, and definitions for the alternative financial service providers. The original, the original text amendment, which was reviewed by the Regional Planning Commission, permitted the AFSPs in only the B1 Neighborhood Business District. It also restricted the number of these uses to no more than one per each 20,000 residents. They needed to be located at least 1,000 feet from any other lot containing the same use, and they needed to be located at least 20 feet from any lot within a residential zoning district. So, this really limited the, the location of where, where these services might be, was going to create a handful of non-conforming uses, and I think that's what concerned the, the Regional Planning Commission. And upon further review, the, the Regional Planning Commission did think that restricting it to B1 only was overly restrictive. Limit, the limitation of one per 20,000 residents would have restricted to the township to only having two of these businesses, and it would create the non-conforming uses. The Regional Planning Commission did, however, recognize that the language about the, an AFSP use within 1,000 feet of another is relatively common language that you find around the state. They also felt that with, with this only being allowed in a B1 zone, and then prohibiting these uses to not, not being allowed within 200 feet of any residential district, it really limited the available lots within the B1 district. So, the lots available, it was only about 25% of the lots that were even already zoned B1. That said, staff actually recommends modifying the language that was put in front of you in July. You should have it in your packet as Attachment A, specific to the definition, or, specific to the Article 8 language on alternative financial service providers. Staff recommends adding that these uses also be allowed in the B2 General Business Zoning District, as well as modifying the proposed restriction on the number permitted from one per 20,000 residents to one per 10,000 residents, but maintaining the 1,000-foot buffer from each other, as well as the 200-foot buffer from residential districts. I do not have that language on my slides up here, but again, you do have it in your packet. Attachment A, again, has to do with the changes to Article 8. And Attachment B, which is very similar to what you saw in July, the changes are highlighted in red for both Article 8 and Article 16. That said, staff does recommend approval of the text amendment with the proposed modifications.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith, do you have any questions or comments for staff?
On my side.
Mr. Lauf?
Oh, yes. I saw a lot of red writing there. When we first talked about this back in July and August, I asked several questions, and I am interested in getting answers to those questions. The first, the first question was, was never clear to me, is exactly what problem are we solving here? You know, we say mitigate any negative impacts to the community, and then we, we've got the standard legal, what, what enables us to do that? What problem are we solving? I mean, what is the negative impacts, the adverse impacts? Have we had problems, you know, I mean, we had excessive police calls, have we had crime, have we had, I mean, what is it that we're doing with this, other than the fact that we don't like it? That's a different question. I want to know, I mean, we're obligated here to do things that are defensible.
I don't know that Coleraine Township has seen specific issues with these properties. And I feel like I default back to this in almost every meeting so far. I was not here when this was initiated. I've done a little bit of digging and found some research through the American Planning Association, which does support, there's kind of this argument back and forth, is it the chicken or the egg? Does the decline follow these types of businesses, or do these businesses follow the decline? I don't know that there's really a definitive answer on that. But as far as, with respect to what's happening in Coleraine Township, at this point, so far in my tenure, I am not aware of any of these businesses specifically creating any more of an issue than, than anything else. So, unfortunately, I'm not able to, I think, fully answer your question as to where this really came from.
So, we don't have anything we can point to, and the...
Not, not that I'm...
The planning literature is mixed, right?
Yes.
And I've also read, as I think I recited last time, where these things exist in states that have them, personal bankruptcies in those states are lower than they are in states without them. Now, again, I mean, some academic did all this study, I may take it for what it's worth. So, like any business, it seems to me, they are a mixed blessing, you know, they've got some puts and some takes. My second question, and I think one that was also raised in the Hamilton County Regional Planning Review, is how many of these things do we have today in the township? So, we're saying now, we can have five or six, depending on how you count, we can have five or six. How many have we got?
I have, provided by our police department, forgive me, I don't have a date on this, it was sometime late summer, I have three specifically that we would consider kind of check-cashing, like your traditional alternative financial service providers. Two are located on Coleraine Avenue, and one is located on West Goulet. I was also provided a list of some of those other businesses which kind of buy-sell-trade. So, you know, it could be diamonds, it could be video games, it could be that kind of thing, not necessarily what we would consider pawn shops or...
Right, yeah, buy, buy self-trade, I don't know if that's what we were trying to come up with.
So, as far as, as far as what, what I think we would generally consider traditional, you know, financial service providers, three. We have three.
Is one of those auto title?
Say it again.
Is one of those the auto title place?
I do not have that on my list, no.
See, that's what, I mean, what worries me is, we, I mean, we tried to define it here. You know, I don't know, I drove down to Coleraine from 275 to the southern border, and I counted six, by my count. But again, I mean...
That's how you define it, sure.
Yeah, that's how you, you know, I mean, I didn't go into each one and say, you know, measure your business. I didn't check with gas stations to see if they're doing 100 checks a month, and it's not at all clear to me how you're going to do that. Well, but we're writing, we're writing in the zoning, and we're writing in the zoning, something we can't check, that does, that seems to me to be bad zoning.
Well, it's, it's, I think it's something that in collaboration with the police department, it would be kind of that, it would be, that would be how we would enforce, is via the police department and...
Well, I'm going to zone, though. So, now, somebody comes and says, I want to build a convenience store and a gas station. And I say, so you're going to do that, but you can't, you can't do over 100, I'm going to write that in that they can't do over 100 checks a month, right? Where was it I saw that? So, I just, I, I worry that, you know, here we are, you know, the police count three, I counted more, and let me give you another one.
Which language are you referring to?
I mean, I, sorry.
Page 185.
That last sentence, page 185, excludes state or federally chartered by, but, and, or gas stations, so long as the gas station does not conduct more than 100 such transactions in a calendar month. Now, that seems to me to be zoning, I can't zone on that basis, and you can't enforce on that basis, so what's in there for? I just have a problem with that. I mean, when we get vague stuff like that, we pollute the bite that zoning should have. I mean, it ought to be done, the purpose of zoning is to be clear to a property owner and to the township, what the rules and rules are. Similarly, it is not clear to me, now, maybe you said you reviewed it with legal counsel, it is not clear to me, any applicant for zoning certificate, which, which would cause any structure, building, or land to be used as an alternative financial service provider, because that means a small incidental use or a principal use. The example I'll give you is, one of the things we list is money transfer business. By that definition, the Kroger on Coleraine is an alternative financial service provider, because they specifically have money transfer operations and operations that look like the Southern Western Union plan, just, and there's, and there's lines in there, I got to tell you. I go in there, and there are people in there wiring money and doing this and that all the time. So, I go, you're going to make Kroger an alternative financial service provider? And if so, that doesn't strike me as particularly what we're trying to get at with this text amendment. I mean, I don't think I'm trying to say Kroger can't have a Western Union in there. But, or conversely, it's saying that, you know, the alternative financial service provider is, again, that's a saying, is a, is an incidental use, which I would describe the Western Union and Kroger, but that's not clear to me in this text amendment. Somebody couldn't stand up and say, Rich, what are you doing? You're proving an alternative service provider there, because they're doing wire transfers every day. I guarantee it, Kroger's doing more and harder than you are. So, that, that bothers me. So, I just, this, once again, it comes back, we're trying to solve a vague problem, and by doing that, we're solving it in ways that I can see creating other problems that either make it difficult for the zoning commission to render a judgment on whether something is a conforming use to the zoning, or alternatively, for enforcement following it. So, I approve Kroger, and then Kroger puts in Western Union, your move, you going to enforce that or not? I can't tell, or at least I can't tell, maybe you say with legal counsel, you went through all that, and you can.
Yeah, I think Larry was comfortable, I think, with the parameters of, kind of the four major criteria. As for the definitions, he and I did not have any sort of in-depth discussion about those definitions. So, that, all of those definitions have, have come strictly from that original text amendment, which was reviewed by Hamilton County Regional Planning.
Right, and they, and what did they say?
I don't know that they had...
They said no, basically.
They said no, but it was based on those, those overarching parameters, I believe. I don't remember seeing anything about the definitions themselves. They were more concerned about the restriction of the location.
Yeah, and that, I'm comfortable with what you've done there. I'm not entirely sure I'm comfortable with the six in the township. I suspect we'd have more than that. I strongly suspect we have more than that. And then that means their, their point about non-conforming use...
They would be non-conforming uses, yes.
Absolutely true, and, you know, I, so I just, this just doesn't seem to me to be quite yet on target here. And I, I understand, I don't, I'm not beating you up, I understand you inherited this one, but, I mean, I think we, you know, I think we owe it to ourselves, and we owe it to the township, to be more precise on this stuff than we are in this. I just have a hard time saying, I can take this piece of zoning and sit up here and make an intelligent decision, nor do I think that if somebody came in and said, what, what are those guys doing, you could make an intelligent enforcement decision. End of conversation. The staff have questions for me, maybe?
No, sir.
Mr. Ferring?
I'm good with Ferring, he's talking about...
Mr. Grody?
Just one, is a, perhaps a technical item on page 63, Mrs. Lecount, would, with that diagram there, would we have to put a P under B2 also?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I agree with a lot of the things that Mr. Lauf is saying, just so we're not digging a hole for ourselves that we can't get out of eventually, and I just wonder, since the moratorium goes through Jan, January 31st, if I'm not mistaken, would it be wise, I'm only making a suggestion, that we table this this evening, to give Mrs. Lecount the opportunity to go back and kind of find out for herself where this really came from, and what's the impetus behind it, to be able to answer Mr. Lauf's questions a little more in-depth?
I believe, the challenge is that the trustees really should hear this before the end of the moratorium.
Okay.
That's not to say, just because the moratorium ends doesn't mean that...
There are 10 more lined up at the...
That anybody's lined up at the door to, to come in with this. So, I, I don't know how critical that timing is, but if you want the trustees to hear it before, before that January deadline, your recommendation from tonight would move forward to them. So, you could recommend however you might, and that's what they would hear. And then, they can vote based on your comments, or if you choose to table, staff can take another stab at it, and see where, see where we end up in January. That can report to the trustees in January that you've tabled it.
As Mr. Lauf was speaking, I was sitting here trying to rack my brain to remember how did this surface, and for what reason did it surface? "How did this surface and for what reason did it surface?" And I can't remember that. Perhaps Mr. Westfall or Mrs. Smith might. With Mr. Ferring being relatively new to the commission, I don't know if either of the other two commissioners can remember why this was surfaced.
I, what I remember is a conversation with your predecessor, who said the trustees had received a couple of complaints from somebody. And I, again, it wasn't clear to me even at the time what those complaints were, about what kind of facility or what the nature of complaint was. But I believe, I mean, in fairness, I think the trustees did get somebody chewing on him about this. But again, unless we can be more precise about the nature of the problem, you know, I could go chew on the trustees and say, "Well, I don't like these things." I don't like ballpoint pens either, but they're legal to sell in the township, you know. I don't like country music, but there's lawyers that play it. I don't like payday lenders, but they're a legitimate business that, you know.
I think it was wrong that one time it was too many in a particular area. To my memory, that's what went on.
Yeah, the request came from the trustees that we initiate this. And I believe it had, that there were becoming more and more and more and more.
But again, if there's more and more and more and more, then we say, "Well, there's three." That's not more and more and more and more. So that says we, again, we just haven't properly got a grasp of what we're trying to do with this amendment. Unless, I mean, maybe the trustees, maybe, you know, you sit down with the trustees, they can say, "Oh, those guys don't know what they're doing, it's this, this, this." Well, great, then we need a draft of zoning amendment that's responsive to that.
So if I'm, if, if staff is understanding clearly, the concern really is over the defining of it and not so much the parameters of the regulation, correct? Not so much...
No, I, I am, I'm not worried, I think we, I think in terms of the zoning, I think we're fine.
Okay. So it's, it's the, it's the definitions that we're struggling with?
And until we do that, I mean, we don't know where we got three, six, or forty. And if we don't know that, then how and on what basis can we say one per ten thousand is the right answer? What's the number in Hamilton County empirically, not by zoning? Don't count the number of these things against our definitions in Hamilton County, divide by the population of Hamilton County, what do I get? I don't know. What do I get in Westchester County? I mean, I think this is just, this is a tougher issue than we're giving it credit for. I mean, it's sort of like the sexually oriented businesses. I mean, it's, you gotta be, you gotta be precise and you gotta be careful and you gotta make sure that you're within accepted sort of planning guidelines and if there's been any, any judicial actions, you know, and so on and so on, so.
If indeed the commission did approve this this evening, then would that mean those existing businesses would be grandfathered?
Yeah, non-conforming uses.
Okay. And it would only apply to those then who come and knock on our door?
Yeah.
To start a business, right?
Well, or, let's say I'm a landlord and I rent a space. Right? I would be turning, let's say I've got a bakery there and I want to turn it into a payday lender. I would be turning it into a non-conforming use.
That would not be acceptable.
Right. That wouldn't be acceptable, right. So, I mean, you know, that, it would prevent that sort of spread, but it wouldn't do anything about the ones you got.
Right, the ones that, the ones that exist, exist. They would be grandfathered, yes.
So how many do we presently have?
That was, that's, that's the question, and it's going to be based on the definition. I have a list here, provided by the Corrine Township Police Department, of three that are kind of the traditional undefined, obviously.
Pawn shop, right?
There are, yes.
You said they didn't have car title, tell me, that brings me up to five.
Right.
You didn't have Western Union, that brings me up to probably every Kroger store, Walmart in the, in the township.
I don't think that counts.
Well, I wouldn't think it counts here, but I'm just reading what's put in front of me.
All right, they'll do transfer a lot of money.
There's a line there at three six, go in there on Saturday, go to the township.
What was it, Mr. Lauf, I'm sorry, you said the auto title, Western Union, what was the other one? Pawn shop, sorry, thank you.
Again, I mean, then you do have a problem with what you do with the, we buy and sell and all of that stuff. I mean, I, that to me...
Because I have a list of those also, you know.
That wouldn't, that wouldn't, at least in my judgment, that's not what we're trying to regulate here, but...
Well, I think in staff's opinion, that's where Western Union would come in. You know, Western Union is not, but in the definition...
I'm just reading the words.
Sure, absolutely. But as far as I think what the intention of trying to, to regulate, I don't think Western Union falls in that category. So it's the definitions.
You've got to get it right, and we do need, and we need a justification for, once we get those definitions right, we need a justification for one per ten thousand. You know, if I go look in Hamilton County and I find it's one per four thousand, how do you justify one per ten?
I don't know that it's going to be one per four, I think one per ten thousand is a pretty standard.
So you think, in other words, I can go find in the American planning...
Yeah, I, based on what I received back from the APA, that was kind of, and what Hamilton County was saying is that's relatively common, particularly in Ohio. Every state's a little different, but one per ten thousand really, even one per twenty thousand isn't unheard of, but it tends to be larger metro areas, so like Cleveland is, I believe, one per twenty thousand. We're not Cleveland. I don't think we should be on the same, you know, I don't, I don't think that it's comparable.
My guess is that it has something to do with behaviors that are associated with those type places.
Well, and I think, I think her point earlier is a good one. You know, people look at this and say, "Oh, my gosh, the neighborhood is deteriorating." But is it they move in because the neighborhood's deteriorating? Or is the neighborhood, do they move in and suddenly the neighborhood deteriorates? I have a hard time with that latter argument myself.
Well, I don't know that they're doing a whole lot for neighborhood revitalization. I don't think that there can be the argument, so, you know, it almost doesn't matter which comes first.
Not at all adverse to regulating, but we've got to do it in a way that makes sense. And I just, you know...
Staff would agree.
Okay, where are we on this?
Mr. Chairman?
Thanks.
Make any motions. It seems to me there's, you know, two motions, there's two possible motions, right? One's a motion to approve, and the other's a motion to table. That's about it. We've got to have one of those two.
Right. Or disapprove.
Well, normally you're making, you're making an affirmative motion, and then you...
Okay, you know what Mr. Lauf thinks? Mr. Grody? Mr. Grody, should we table it? Should we vote on it? What should we do?
I'll make a motion that we table this, this piece of business this evening until we can get further clarification from the trustees, is just to the absolute need for it and reason for it being presented to us to work on.
I would, I would...
We get a date served, yeah.
I would, I would, yeah, I would say, yeah, pick a date.
Right. Mrs. Lecount, it's already the January fifteenth?
Not the moratorium.
Moratorium, okay.
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first, and the trustees meet on the second Tuesday, except for maybe January, I don't know.
I mean, the point is this, if we tabled tonight, so if we, if we take that motion and put some date in it, I think what staff told us earlier, it's a virtual certainty that the moratorium will expire unless the trustees extend the moratorium, and I...
They've already done that twice.
They, they're probably at the limit of their ability and willingness to keep extending the moratorium like that, but that's a question for legal counsel.
So what happens if we table it?
We're ready, we should, take it up again in a month.
Either, well, the point is, either the trustees will say, "We're going to extend the moratorium," or the trustees say, "Let the moratorium expire," and, you know, ten more people move in with that stuff.
I'm checking on the, I'm checking on the trustee date for you.
Typically, is it the first Tuesday of the month?
I thought it's the second or fourth, isn't it? We meet on the third?
You're right, it's the second.
So it'll be the twelfth?
It'll be the thirteenth. No, wait, I'm looking at fif, twenty fifteen, sorry. With twelve, you're correct.
And we meet shortly after, is that correct?
Right, we meet the next week.
You will meet on the twentieth. No, you meet on Tuesday night, sorry, you meet on the nineteenth. Mr. Grody, you're correct again, sorry. I'm thinking of the year.
Okay, so we agreed and we said we ought to table one right now, but this may...
That's the motion that you made.
Okay. But the request was to add a date, so I'll add a date till January nineteenth.
Okay. It's been moved to the second, isn't it, we, excuse me. Table case number Z82015J04 text amendment to January, give it to me again.
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth, twenty thousand sixteen. Do we have a second? Oh, we didn't have a second, it's been moved to the second. Can we have a room call, please?
Mr. Lauf? Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Grody?
Yes.
Mr. Ferring?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried, is tabled. Next on the agenda is, excuse me, informal concept review for the preferred Discount Tire at ninety-three, forty-three Corrine Avenue. Staff?
Staff does not have a presentation on an informal, but I believe that the applicant is here to speak.
The informal concept review is, this is what staff may or may not make a presentation. The applicant may also make a presentation, and the commission will have a discussion and make recommendations to the applicant. Does the applicant have a presentation?
If I may, I'd like to...
Now that we're all stirred up.
That's right. You got a tough job, buddy.
Okay, good evening. My name is Todd Mosher, I'm with Ari Smith National. I'm representing Discount Tire this evening. And with, with me this evening, we have Ron Archer, who's the regional vice president with Discount Tire, and Rich Summer, who's a vice president from the corporate office in Scottsdale, Arizona. The property that we are looking at is at ninety-three, forty-three Corrine Avenue. It's currently a restaurant use. We have met with staff briefly on the, on the project proposal. Our intention would be to purchase the property and redevelop it with a Discount Tire store. Show me restaurant, yes, I'm sorry. According to our meeting with staff, you know, the use itself is a permitted use in the general zoning district that this is in. However, because the property is in the PUD, BPUD, I believe, it would require a major amendment to that to allow us to change, you know, the site plan, the use, the building design, you know, essentially make it a major amendment to everything that's there. So we were advised we can come talk to you and get your thoughts and opinions on it as well. So that's why we are here tonight, we're happy to be here. Discount Tire, and I'll let Rich or Ron talk a little bit more about the actual business itself in a minute, but essentially it's a retail tire store. So the Discount Tire is a retailer of tires and wheels, and they install them, but they do no auto service work at all. So it's just strictly a business of selling and installing tires and wheels. The proposal that we have in front of you would be to replace the existing building with a brand-new building. Discount Tire is roughly seventy-three hundred square foot building, one single story. And the building itself would be in conformance with the architectural guidelines and standards that are currently in place. You know, and the, the building would be, you know, on top of that would be a completely masonry constructed building. It's not a framed building with brick glued to it or a veneer. It's a, it's a fairly formidable structure. It's, the colors presented to you tonight are, you know, more of an earth tone building. And again, you know, we, we put a lot of pride and effort into, you know, our buildings. They're fully, fully sprinkled buildings. The overall cost of the development would be somewhere in the range of three million dollars. And in terms of other benefits, other than the building itself, which you can see in front of you, we would be adding additional green space to the property, roughly about eight hundred square feet less impervious area to what's there currently. Traffic itself, this is a much lower traffic generator than restaurants, so the traffic impacts in the area would be, would be minimized. Hours of operation, I don't know if the current hours of operation of the restaurant itself, my guess is they're open for lunch, or they probably open till in the evening. Our hours are nine in the morning till, eight, eight in the morning till six o'clock at night. Closed on Sunday. At eight to five on Saturday, thank you, Rich. So, you know, you know, because it's not a restaurant, there'd be less impact also to other infrastructure within the township. Sewer water usage would be less. As I mentioned before, traffic is less. Potentially other services would be minimized as well. We have seven full-time employees would be planned for this, and roughly twenty part-time. Full-time jobs have, you know, full benefits, which again, if you, Rich and Ron could explain more about what that is, but they're very good jobs for the community. And this is a detail to, just while you have it in front of you, yeah, maybe some other full benefits would be the setbacks of the building over what's there currently would be increased from both the street side, the Corrine setback is proposed on that drawing. It's about ninety feet versus the restaurant, I think it's closer to about forty-five feet off the street. So our front door would come back further away from the entrance drive. And then on the south side of the building, the current building has about a ten-foot setback, and I think we're at about forty-five feet off the southern lot line. So there are increased setbacks and separation from adjacent uses. So with that, I guess we'd like to open it up and see if there's any questions that you might have.
Mrs. Smith, do you have any questions?
Yes, how would this be different than the numerous tire places that we have on Corrine?
What, which you want to address, Rich Summer?
Mr. Chairman, questions? Excuse me, my name's Rich Summer, I'm assistant vice president for Discount Tire. Discount Tire is the leader of the industry as far as tire business. We're the number one independent in the world and the United States. I guess what we do bring is we pride ourselves on service. We probably have some of the highest rated service in the country. Price-wise, we guarantee the lowest price, so we try to bring service with lowest price. I guess I look at buildings, there's a lot of nice tire stores out there, a lot of nice buildings, not just us, but we build a nice building, we put a lot of money into it, and we commit... and we come into a place we plan on staying. We don't come in and decide to move down the road, we come in to stay. We've been in business since 1960, 55 years. One man owns Discount Tire, we've all worked with him since we were, I guess, kids. I was 24 in 58. I'll be coming up on 34 years, Ron, 30 years. So we've been with Discount Tire for a long time, so I guess that stands for something. We don't leave. I'm not saying everybody else does, but a lot of people do leave businesses in different... As we all know, but with Discount Tire, people seem to stay because it's a family business and they treat us very, very well, and we bring a lot to the table.
Love the competition?
Love the competition, don't have to knock it, just got to beat it. And I mean that sincerely, we do not knock the competition. I'll tell you a quick little story to that. When I... We all ran stores, Ron and I, we all grew up in the business. A gentleman, I was in Albuquerque in Mexico, came in and said, "Can I talk to the manager?" I said, "I'm Rich, how can I help you?" He said, "Rich, I've been up and down the street." And Albuquerque just happened to be roughly 18 tire stores in a long stretch, that's the road I was on. Yeah, so to your point tonight. Anyway, he said, "I've been up and down the street, everybody puts you down, this must be the place to buy tires." So we don't have to put people down, we just have to do it better than everybody else.
Mr. Lau?
Is this your first? Tell me about this region, like sort of the...
Right, and I'll kind of, I'm going to look back. Come on up, Ron, if you would too, just till I get this right. This is our first store in this region, right?
This will be... We have 36 stores in my region, which consist of Indiana, Indianapolis area, South Bend. In Ohio, we're in Dayton and Columbus, and the northern part up around Cleveland. So this will be my region.
So it'll be the first, this will be the first though, with the...
Well, no, we're...
I mean, depending, I understand, your region may be different.
Well, we're...
I think in the 275 Beltway region or something.
We're going to be opening three stores in the Cincinnati area this, well, next year, 2016. Our plans are to open about 30 to 35 locations in the area.
And just for the record, Ron and I are both wearing cowboy boots, and we did listen to cowboy music all the way up. I just, I just want to get out in the open and just... We want to be transparent and honest.
We won't cash checks or play country music.
I did get a little tigger when he said that myself.
Let me just, if I may. Discount Tire consists of 19,000 employees. Again, family-owned, one man, we've all been with him since we were young. It's a great company, they give back to the community, we do a lot of things. The company does a lot of things. We do a lot of, we fly Make-A-Wish kids in our planes wherever they want to go. There are programs that Ron has in place, different charities and that we do. We don't, we don't give money to every little league team that wants money. We find the people that are truly sick or truly in need. And our wives at corporate and our wives throughout all the regions come together and they, the owners, they are very kind and let us pick charities. So we start with eight, we narrow it down to four, then we get to two, and they present. So these are, these are large amounts of money. These are not, like I said, just giving money to little league stuff like that. We try to focus on bigger and more serious issues. The owners of Discount Tire, Mr. and Mrs. Holly, just to give you an idea. Years ago, we had a program where our kids would have to write a paper and go in front of a board and try to get a scholarship to go to college. I think everybody here kind of knows you're limited to how many people you can do that with. So the Mr. and Mrs. didn't like that. So they decided that they would send every child of every employee at Discount Tire to college, and they'll pay for it. I don't know how many companies do stuff like that. So they're very, very kind, they're very, very giving, and we would like to be here.
Mr. Farin?
Is everyone... Where is the closest one in this area that you have, to Dayton?
Uh, would be Dayton.
Dayton, yeah, I believe so. And right now, just, we're right at about 925 locations throughout the country.
Mr. Grody?
Mrs. LaCount, is the current zoning appropriate for their intention?
Yes, the use is appropriate, it's zoned as planned district business. So it's kind, and the land use plan actually calls for, I think it's general retail, as it does most, down most of that portion of Corrine Avenue.
Mr. Summer, is it...
Yes.
Would your company, would Discount Tire be buying the property and own the building? Or is it going to be owned by J.H. Southport?
We would be purchasing the property and own the building.
Okay, and then is it going to be a franchise?
No, we all, Mr. Holly owns all buildings.
So it'll be managed locally, but owned by the...
So, yeah, and that's the thing. We, our dream, the company dream is, for all of us, like Ron and I, we grew up in the stores, was to get, to become a manager, so you get to run your own business. And from there, we get promoted into, he's the vice president now, this is the vice president. So, yeah, the dream is to keep building stores so the ladies and gentlemen in our stores can keep moving up and own, and run their own business someday. So it's not a franchise, you're working for the company. But when you have your own store, you have the opportunity, as everyone can imagine, to make as much money as many tires as you can sell.
I echo Mrs. Smith's concern about the number of stores there. I did a count today, I drove from our southern boundary to Struble Road, which helped me. Is that maybe two miles, three miles at best? In that distance?
Maybe it's farther than that.
Okay, and there are 12 tire stores within that distance, in addition to five or six car dealerships, so, you know, I...
The car dealerships tend to...
Competing too much, yeah.
The car dealerships, if you mean tires, then I'd say, well, great, at the end of the work we're doing, if they can order you or one of your competitors.
Right.
The dealers tend to outsource tires to guys like you. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, to a point.
Can I, is okay, I answer your question too. The big difference between Discount Tire and probably the 12 dealerships that you saw, we don't pop hoods, we don't change oil. All we do is strictly sell tires and we sell wheels. And the majority of the dealerships out there, tire business is just a small part of their business. And that's all we do. We don't have cars outside overnight, you're not going to drive by our stores and see oil dumpsters. When you drive by one of our stores, a lot of people say, you know, they come to our stores and they say, "This is amazing because it doesn't look like a tire store." You walk inside, it's really nice, our people are very professional. To Rich's point earlier, I have a son that works for the company. I started as one of those kids in the back room 30 years ago, and had the opportunity to work my way up. So we don't look at ourselves as, we don't hire mechanics. And when you see our people, they don't look like tire people. I mean, they're slacks and nice dress shirts, and so that's... You know, I just want to kind of answer your question, really the difference between us and what our competitors are.
I would think at least two or three of us you saw also don't really do much for some tires. So...
No, it's, that's, absolutely.
But, you know, hey, it's your business, I assume you've done the market studies.
We have.
You're building a lot of new stores, you must, you must know how to site stores.
I know they love competition.
It keeps everybody honest.
We don't, we pick these sites because it says we should be here, as you can imagine. We have people that work hard on that. We wouldn't, we wouldn't want to come in if we weren't going to be successful. I'll just give you a little, I just opened one up in April in Glenwood Springs, Colorado. That's by Breckenridge and Vale, not far. Was supposed to do very well. There's some tire stores that have been there a long time. And last month, they did a million dollars in sales. So to the point is, competition is good because what we heard over time, and it wasn't knocking the competition, we're so glad someone else came in with better pricing and stands by the pricing and has great service. So as, as you can tell from the numbers, it worked for us. And it's working for the people of the community.
I just pointed out this...
No, absolutely, no, you're correct.
I have no further questions. No further questions.
I have no questions. I don't know anything about your company, but, and I do know there's a lot of tire people here, and... We welcome good companies. I can tell you're excited, I know that. If you're any kind, if you do any kind of retail at all. I used to be in the convenience store business, and we loved another convenience store right across the street from us.
Absolutely.
Because it gave us somebody to beat.
Gave people a choice.
And that's, that's the way it is. Does anybody else have any comments they'd like to...
Well, I mean, if you want a comment, I mean, the purpose of this is to sort of gauge the sentiment of the commission. I would say, pending, you know, what you bring in finally, I would be predisposed to think this is consistent with what we're doing there and, you know, do something about it.
Thank you.
I would have no reason to turn it down.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll see you in what, two months, three months?
Yes. Looking at the...
Did I hear you say you had to buy that property still?
Yes, we're, it...
Are you in negotiations already?
Right, it's in escrow right now, and we're working, and that's why we're here, to make sure that we won't buy unless we can be there, so.
I don't see a reason you wouldn't be.
Thank you all, and everybody have a nice holiday.
Besides, I was the guy that didn't want that palm tree up there in the first place.
You know, the one thing is, is I, you won't produce much traffic, I'm not sure they're producing much traffic either.
They started out with three and I've got it down to one.
We're actually going to raffle that, no, just kidding.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Thank you, same to you.
You as well.
Next on the agenda is old business, do we have any, it says none. Okay, next on the agenda is new business, we want to initiate a tax amendment on race receptacles. Like that goes along with the new waste, the solid waste district?
It does not, actually, it's, this is...
Okay.
This is a separate, this, and you have a memorandum in front of you with the proposed addition to paragraph 12.5.2 of the zoning resolution to essentially allow for trash receptacles to be stored in the front yard on the driveway as long as it's up against the house. The reason that staff is hopeful that this board will initiate this amendment is because enforcement is quite a challenge for staff. Excuse me. And as it was being reviewed, it felt more appropriate to add in the language that it could be done up against the house in the front or garage rather than taking out that entire paragraph, because we do, the code already defines the different, you know, the difference between 32 gallons, larger or smaller. And I didn't think it was appropriate to essentially have to rewrite the entire paragraph. I thought it was more appropriate to just add in this, this half sentence here. But this is for the board to discuss and share your thoughts on.
Mr. Grody?
Couple of items. First of all, how will we enforce this if it goes through with extra things being placed around an item, a container larger than 32 gallons, boxes, bags, and so on and so forth? Could that become an unsightly situation also?
It would, it would be enforced the same way the property maintenance code would be enforced.
Part of the new nuisance ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. So that would be, right now, as it stands, you cannot store your closed, cleaned-up garbage can throughout the week. You cannot store it in front of your, in front of your home, it has to be on the side or in the rear. And it's not, that's not realistic in a lot of our neighborhoods, to kind of drag it around the side. It's not realistic for a lot of our residents, and it's not realistic for our enforcement officer to try and enforce that when these cans might move around different days of the week. As far as additional clutter or additional piles of garbage, that is not considered appropriate and that would be handled through the property maintenance code.
But generally, it's only going to be up until the next day of collection, right?
Generally, so if it's, if it's a bigger issue than that, it's something that our code enforcement officer would be charged with, with challenging or with taking care of. Typically, we, you're not going to get complaints on a neighbor who does have one, one week, they happen to have more garbage out there after the holidays, more garbage. Generally, that's not what we're concerned about. And in all honesty, if we were to get a complaint, it would be likely taken care of before we even got out to inspect it. So that's not what we're going after with these. This is just the general storage of the trash cans themselves not needing to be pulled into the, into the side yard or backyard.
Okay, I have no other questions.
Mr. Farin?
Yeah, I just have one look on dumpsters, you know, when they're rehabbing houses. Like I see over in Northbrook, I have one that's sat next to a house I had over there for probably a year and a half in the front yard. You know which one I'm talking about?
Yeah, I do, yeah.
The diagram.
Yep.
And here it just says on that, setback from the front of agricultural residential property discharges, and it doesn't really talk a whole lot.
I would consider those special cases, that is not what this, that is not what this paragraph is seeking to address. If a dumpster's been sitting there for a year, year and a half, that's something that should, that kind of complaint should come into...
But as far as somebody just don't want to, they have it there for a week or whatever while they're tearing a house down.
That's especially, that's not what this is regulating them.
A lot of times you have one where you...
Sure, sure. I'm going to have some next to that one.
Oh, really?
Mr. Lau?
The one thing that, and I don't have a problem with this small amendment you've put in there, but I'm worried, and it comes back to this question of, once we go to the new solid waste management system. I mean, I would suspect that most of us will be in a situation of sub-paragraph three, right? I mean, I'm sure I've got two cubic yards, so I've got one of the great big green roller recycle bins, one great big brownie garbage bins, that's got to be two cubic yards together, isn't it? And you've written that so that I'm just under...
That would be six feet tall, three foot wide, and...
That really refers to dumpsters, I believe, that two...
So you're saying if I have a big green one or a big brownie, I've got less than a cubic yard each?
Right, you're, it's that 32 gallon that is the...
How big is the brownie?
I...
Big like brownie?
It's bigger than 32. It's bigger than 32, but...
I should, green one's bigger than 32.
I don't believe that we're talking two cubic yards.
No, they're not.
No, I don't think so.
The largest front loader, like if a restaurant gets eight yards for a front loader, the largest one they send out, so...
Those are huge.
Yeah.
The large brown one from Rumpkey is 96 gallon?
96 gallons. I don't want to sit here and convert the hours.
I'll take you guys' word for it.
Last time I did that was in Fizzies, playing...
Mrs. Smith?
My concern is similar to Mr. Lau in terms of the new regulations coming down with Rumpkey and the township. The recycling dumpster, I understand, will be a sizable garbage can along with your regular... regular garbage can, so how do we address that?
Well, it's my understanding that those, those new containers that would be provided by Rumkey will be, they will be consistent in sizing. So, everyone will have one trash can and one recycle bin. So, you don't have several different cans possibly rolling around the yard and the street on a windy trash day.
Okay, because everybody will have those heavy pull-out things like I've got now.
My concern is where you put two big cans.
Well, and that's, that's actually, that's part of, that's part of this, because those that already have trouble getting their cans to the side or rear yard, this would, this would provide them the opportunity to roll them right up to the front of their, either garage or the house, right there on the driveway, rather than having to drag them around.
It'd probably help.
So, I don't know if you don't answer this, are we allowed to decline the recycling? Just, I, I got a small house, I can't, I don't have any space, so I'm just gonna take one instead of two.
I don't have the answer to that question, though.
I don't.
I can, I can find that, I can, I can speak with you outside of this meeting, I can get you some more information about that, but I do not have that with me, no. I don't know the details of that agreement.
My own sense is, this is a small enough tweak, if you say this makes enforcement easier, we oughta go ahead and do it.
I agree with that.
Solve future problems if they arise.
The chair would entertain a motion that we add language to section twelve point five point two of the zoning text that says, "Or in, or in the front driveway if stored against the house." Do we have a motion?
Is, is the motion that we initiate a change to, to the zoning?
Right. To the zoning text?
Yeah.
Right. That says, "Or in the front driveway if stored against the house." Okay? We got, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we need a roll call? Can we say aye? Can we have a roll call? Okay. I want you to do everything right.
Mr. Lough?
Aye.
Mrs. Smith?
Yeah.
Mr. Grody?
Yes.
Mr. Ferring?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, announcements, oh, I'm sorry, administration, the David J. Allard Plan and zoning workshop in January. Mrs. LaCount?
I have registered those of you who mentioned wanting to participate in this. Mrs. Smith, I don't know if you were interested in participating, if so, please send me an email and I will get you registered. Anybody that needs more information on it, let me know, and I can forward that email to you again.
Is this your nickel or mine?
Yours.
It's ours.
I mean, I don't care. Go away.
It is, it is covered, it is covered under-
I'll be in the double banter when I get home, you know.
It is covered under education.
Education, training.
Thank you.
I have the same problem.
Okay, next on the agenda is announcements. Mrs. LaCount?
Very excited to tell you that we do have a senior planner who will be starting on January fourth, so we will have one more member in our staff, fifty percent larger.
You doubled it.
His name is Marty Kaler, and he will be coming to us from the city of Middletown. He has lots of experience, and I think he's gonna be able to provide us a lot of knowledge and, and guidance through not only the current planning and of what we do here, but also our long-range planning, and so I'm excited to introduce him to you in January.
How, how will that be different than what you do?
I'm sorry?
How will it be different than what your job is?
We are, he and I will work through how exactly we're going to divide out the roles, but I think what will happen is, we will probably split a good amount of the, the zoning or current planning end of things, and then we will also be working together on the comprehensive plan and getting moving forward on some more long-range visioning initiatives through, throughout the next year and beyond.
How do you spell his last name?
K.O.H.L.E.R.
Before we move to number eleven, I would like to wish all of my fellow commissioners and all the staff of the zoning department, on the staff of Corrine Township, and all the people who live in Corrine Township, happy holidays, on behalf of the zoning commission.
Question, Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
The last meeting, the brief discussion at the end about time change for our meetings, was that finalized, are we staying with what we have, changing the time, or what happened?
I'll default to you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, Mrs. LaCount and I decided that we probably, since all the rest of the meetings in the township start at six o'clock, that we probably should start at six o'clock.
They start at six?
They start at six. Trustees started five.
Wow, that's wrong. That's their executive meeting.
It's wrong. What's wrong?
The, the six o'clock, I mean, people that work, they don't get an opportunity to come. They get off work at five or five-thirty, when, when do they get time to come if they have a concern?
I seem to fill it up here for trustee, we need it at six o'clock.
This is, this is totally up to the board, whichever way, in whatever discussion you wanna have about it. In my most recent role down in northern Kentucky, I worked with, I believe it was nineteen different jurisdictions, with a variety of meeting times. I think there were only one or two that started as late as seven or seven-thirty. Most meetings start in that five to six o'clock range. Just, just for some context, now that, I know that's in Kentucky, it's across that big, that big river down there, but it, it's, I, I don't know that I've ever really seen an issue with the public not being able to get to a meeting because of a six o'clock start time, but that's just my experience. So, you know, if this board feels differently, it, this is certainly your decision and not, not staff's.
Did we take a vote on that earlier?
No.
We all weighed it last week.
Is that, is, is anybody else opposed to that?
Just tell me what it is.
I, I, I would prefer the seven for the exact reason that we raised here. I think, I think it is easier for people to work. And you could say that, you know, Susan and I, when we worked downtown, we used to get home at six-thirty, quarter to seven at night, most nights. That's just, you know, not a workout, what do I care, I'm at three in the afternoon.
Okay, let's try it then.
I'm not, I, I, finish my sentence, may make you even feel better.
Probably not.
My heart's at seven, my heart is not in six P.M., but I'm not going to fall if I sort of, or if it's, and I've raised it, six is a great idea, that's what the rest of the township does, I'm not gonna throw my body.
How about you, Mr. Ferring?
I mean, the seven does give the people a better opportunity to get here. I myself would rather be here at six and get over, but it makes no difference to me, I mean, we're here for people, so.
Mr. Grody?
Just tell me what it is, so I keep peace in the hall. Six o'clock is fine with me.
How about six-thirty? We'll make it, we'll just go, we'll split it.
That's a good decision.
We'll split it never, okay. I would prefer six o'clock.
If you wanna do six, and the staff wants to do six, and the township wants to do six.
I would prefer six o'clock.
Six, and it's, what's six-thirty?
Okay. So, I guess we're gonna start at six o'clock in January, sorry, beginning of January.
And we already-
Do we have to-
January, notice, we put out the channel.
We can, and what I, what I was gonna suggest is that if for some reason, after a couple of months, we do find that that is an issue, we can always update the calendars, as long as we're, we've given enough notice. Because those, those are posted online, and certainly, once legal notice goes out for any of the meetings, that time will be set. So, really, if, if we wanted to, we could start moving it all over the place, probably not a good idea. But I, I think we have that ability, as long as there is not a legal notice out on the, on it already.
Would you all feel better if we voted on it? I don't wanna think, I don't wanna mind if you would dip in.
I, no, I wouldn't feel better.
Blame it on you.
I got a question.
I'm gonna blame it on you.
How do we notify the public that there is, when there's a public here? Do we put a sign somewhere, or do we, this problem's in the newspaper in a hidden spot? How, how do we handle that?
It is published in the newspaper, and it is also posted online.
Notices are sent out to adjacent owners.
And, excuse me, and notices are, thank you, Christina, notices are sent out to adjacent owners.
Notices are something that's probably-
Notices, like an individual letter to all of the adjacent property owners.
You will get a notice saying that it's going there.
I, I have seen in practice in different places, signs posted. I do believe that the township used to post signs. I have not seen any of those signs, or, yeah, I, I can look into it, if, because I don't-
I would think that last month's meeting was excellent evidence, that however we're doing it is ensuring that people that have a say are here.
Right.
And I also recall some hearings five or six years ago that amply demonstrated this.
Yeah, and even farther back than that, back in two thousand and five.
Whatever it was, whatever it was.
Yeah, when we started. Okay, six o'clock next year, please. Next on the agenda is, the next meeting is on January nineteenth, twenty sixteen, beginning at six o'clock. Is there anything, anything else that needs to be, needs to come before the commission? The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would like to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, it would be adjourned, all favor say aye. Aye. Motion.
I want to say aye.